One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Want to call the MAA 2025 O'Fallon City Council Workshop to order rural call? Katie?
Mayor Hennessy.
Present.
Councilmember Wexler?
Present.
Councilmember Roth?
He's excused.
Councilmember Boyer?
Here, present.
Councilmember Thompson?
Present.
Councilmember Bibb?
Present.
Councilmember Kaskella?
He's excused.
Councilmember Kewen?
He's excused.
Councilmember Taylor?
Present.
Councilmember Cook?
Present.
Councilmember Ragsdale?
Still the last, but I'm present.
All right, folks, you have an agenda in front of you. What's the pleasure?
Motion to approve Ragsdale.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Ragsdale, second by Councilman Bibb. Questions or comments on favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything on the council agenda that you guys want to talk about? Seeing none, workshop discussion items. First is the potential move of the June 12, 2025 city council meeting to June 19. Mr. Snowden.
Thank you, Mayor. Every year, the Missouri Municipal League holds a newly elected official training program, and it is the Thursday and Friday, the second Thursday and Friday in June. And so, in the past, when a council member came on board, they would attempt to attend that, but they ended up attending a little bit of the time on Thursday, having to come back for a council meeting, and then they may or may not have gotten back up there on Friday morning for the last part of the training. Because 40% of our council this year are new, I have asked if it would be of interest to make sure that those four council members could attend as much of this training and not miss the city council meeting, because obviously you would lose four of your 10 people at that point. And so, the only way we can really do that is to potentially move the June 12 meeting to June 19. That would mean that we have a meeting on the 19th and the 27th, but that's not a burden on staff. As a matter of fact, it's helpful for the planning and zoning, or the planning folks to be able to have that extra time to get their items on the agenda. So, the question before you is, should we move the June 12, 2025 meeting to June 19 so that 40% of your council can attend that newly elected official training?
Questions? Mr. Bibb?
Thank you, Mayor. Are the newly elected members going to attend the conference?
Yes. I don't know that we have 100% confirmation yet, but at least three of them have said yes, they could make that.
Okay. I'm good with it, as long as people are going.
Okay. So, we will move the June 12 meeting to the 19th of June. Do we need a vote on that, or not? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There we go. Just to make sure.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Next is the O'Fallon Community Development Block Grant Fiscal Year 2025 Annual Action Plan Presentation. Oh, let her do it by herself. Come on.
I am here to officially introduce. All right. Well, good evening. My name's Alexis Jaggers. I am, as of this week, the Economic Development Projects Coordinator, and I am here to introduce Melissa Hoffman, who is our new public assistance specialist. So, she's going to be providing this presentation to you this evening.
There we go.
All right. Hi, everyone.
Hello.
As Alexis mentioned, we are here this evening to present the fiscal year 25 Annual Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG. Just a little bit of some background information. CDBG funding is provided by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, and is one of the longest-running programs. O'Fallon has actually been an entitlement community since 2004, and CDBG is designed to help communities with their greatest community development needs. They serve mostly low- and moderate-income households. That's usually the prime benefit of those projects. So, these are the current income limits. These were just released in April, and so, we look at that 80% area median income at or below, and it is based on household size. So, for example, if you have a household of four, your gross income needs to be at or below $89,100. We have three main national objectives that kind of guide us on how we can spend our money per HUD regulations, and that is low to moderate, slum blight, and urgent need. So, for O'Fallon, we focus more on that low to moderate category, and we look at the limited clientele and housing portions. This is our anticipated entitlement amount, $349,633. This is based on the 2024 entitlement amount that we have received. We have not yet received the $2025 yet, but they did pass a continuing resolution, so we are levelly funded for next year. And this is what we're going to do with it. So, we have our home repair programs. We have an interior home repair, an exterior home repair, and a mobile home repair. We have our trans, or excuse me, our public services, which is up to 15% of our allocation. And so, we carry out our transportation program and emergency homeless prevention. We also have funding for administration, excuse me, and community planning. And then, for the down payment assistance program, affordable rental activities and rate-on testing, those are not through CDBG funds. Those are through the home funds. That is managed from the St. Louis County Home Consortium. We just qualify the projects and properties through those programs. And there we have it. Do we have any questions?
Congratulations on your...
Thank you. Thank you.
So, questions for Melissa? Great job, kid. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Chief, Paul, one of you, proposed new technology for our great police department.
Chief goes first?
Oh, Chief's going first?
Absolutely.
I'm gonna go first, so I can get out of here first. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Tonight, we're here to talk about some new technology that we'd like to implement in the police department. This all started at the CLIA Conference last year, where we got our CLIA accreditation, which is a gold standard in law enforcement, and it was in Winston-Salem, North Carolina, and they had a class down there that I took, and it was about leveraging technology through a real-time information center. And I thought, yeah, I'll go sit in, see what they have to say. And when I went in there, it really blew my mind with how they're using technology in other parts of the country to go to a predictive policing model, which is kind of the new paradigm in where policing is going. We had community policing, we had evidence-based policing, and now we're starting to switch to predictive policing. So, it caught my interest, and at the end of the slideshow, they did a tour of their real-time information center, and they put all their platforms that they use to take all this technology they have, and they call it to put it under one pane of glass. So, right now, say we have 20 different software platforms that we can log into, well, we need 20 different passwords, we have to go through 20 different steps to log in. This brings everything and layers it into one system on one single pane of glass. So, I was looking at the technology they have, and we have all the same stuff. So, I started thinking, well, St. Louis County has a regional information center, but they've never helped us. So, we've had homicides, we've had pursuits, we've had assaults, but we've never gotten any help. So, I started thinking, well, based on the mayor and council's direction to be a regional leader in the area, how can we take this to a more granular level to protect our residents and our officers? So, I got back, I did that, I put my project team together with Paul Jokers, Mike Nunery, and Lieutenant Jeff Cook, and they're going to present to you what they found and how we think we can pull this off and bring this to O'Fallon, keep our residents safe, keep our officers safe, and really elevate the bar and take us to the next level of policing. So, with that, I'm going to let the experts take over.
Well, first of all, I do want to say, I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight to present our proposal of a real-time information center, or what we call either an RTIC, or several will even just say Arctic. Like the Chief said, the team that we worked together on this, Mike Nunery, our software systems administrator, and then also Lieutenant Jeff Cook, who's been a great liaison between the Patrol Division to the Arctic, to make sure, to ensure, basically, we give the Patrol Division what they need to pull this off. For those that may be wondering exactly what is an Arctic or a real-time information center, basically, and then simply put, it is a specialized facility, as the Chief started to explain, with technology systems that are designed to provide law enforcement agencies and those officers with real-time data to enhance their ability to respond to incidents. Of course, we can track ongoing criminal activities, excuse me, and support decision-making, and that's by giving immediate access to the situational data, which allows for quicker, smarter, and deployment of resources faster, with giving us better resolutions in the end. Of course, we can also analyze and disseminate that information, which ensures that everybody involved in an incident that is going on is being kept up to date with the same information, the same intelligence, which is also boosting coordination and safety for both the officers that are on that call, as well as the citizens we serve. The objectives of our Arctic is to enhance the safety and situational awareness, needless to say, for our first responders and the public, excuse me. And a lot of times, with the technology that's being deployed, this is even being done before the officers arrive on the scene. We assist in the daily operations with proactive support to lessen the workload in the emergency communications center, and then, of course, provide support during events, which O'Fallon is well-known for, as the, such as the Heritage Freedom Fest, the Jam and Summer Concert Series, food truck events, and of course, much, much more. While all the events can be done easily, thank you, on-site, with this technology can be easily done behind the scenes as well, ensuring seamless coordination between the law enforcement officers, between EMS, between the event organizers, for the safety of everybody, the citizens and the visitors that are attending those special events. And then, of course, with the technology, we will operate on the forefront, as O'Fallon has already become well-known for. Some of the roles and responsibilities of the Arctic, we will supplement calls for service with accurate and timely information with the use of this technology. The Arctic will be able to pick up on 911 unknown locations. That is done because a lot of times, when callers call in on 911, they don't know where they're calling from, and it's nothing against them, it could be due to panic, injury, or even poor cell service that's going on at the time. The O'Fallon Arctic will have the necessary tools, we have access to a lot of them already, but being able to pull them all into one location, such as cell tower data, GPS triangulation, prior call history, and even social media, if needed, to help pinpoint the exact location of that caller, helping the emergency communications officer on the communications floor. We will also have the capability to prepare and send out mass notifications if the event would ever need the requirement for it, and monitor and scrape social media and other open-source platforms during in-progress incidents. Being able to do this, as we all know, everybody runs to social media to begin with in the first, every time something happens. Usually, social media knows about it before the 911 dispatcher gets a call. What this will allow us to do is gather that unfiltered information directly from the citizens, we'll be able to ensure that information is accurate, and start informing the officers while they're responding to that call. And then, more importantly also, when requested, as O'Fallon's been known for as well, if we're requested to help, our Arctic will be able to assist in that area as well. Real-time call assistance is what we want to be able to provide. We'd be able to fill those informational gaps when they come up by using mapping tools, past incident data, property records, to provide more context, such as building layouts, known hazards, and prior calls to that specific address. We can monitor camera feeds, access recording devices and information that's available already through a lot of our systems, and assist with that caller or location when needed. To continue on the proactive assistance, we can also provide assistance with missing persons, whether that be an elderly walkaway, a missing child, we can help with suicidal subjects, welfare checks, incidents that occur on the highway, whether they be traffic hazard, disabled motorists, traffic accidents, and again, just helping out wherever there is any informational gaps in calls, the Arctic can step up and take over that information. The technology that we have elected to use, that we're proposing to council, is the Flock OS system. We did not come to this software system lightly. We looked very hard. We made calls to several agencies across the nation, who have deployed information centers as well. What our team here did is we narrowed it down to the top-two software systems that we wanted to recommend. To even take it a step further, myself, Mike, and Lieutenant Cook spent several days over on the Kansas City side of the state, visiting multiple information centers, and have come to the conclusion that the Flock OS system is the best solution for the O'Fallon Arctic. Additionally, O'Fallon already uses Flock, so the officers are familiar with Flock, so it'll be an easy transition. The one thing that we can do with leveraging the existing Flock technology is, Flock is already integrated into cities, municipalities, counties, and states across the nation. We have access to it. By using the centralized hub to pull it all together, we can get alerts, we can get notifications, and from anywhere outside the O'Fallon area, before it even hits our borders. So, if something is coming towards O'Fallon, if we know about it, we can use the system and find detection, and hopefully stop it before it even gets here. With this technology, the O'Fallon Police Department, we're going to take advantage of all the resources, as the Chief said, pull it all together in one single pane of glass, that's normally been multiple people, multiple offices, or multiple councils in the communications center. Analysts will have access to all of it in that one simple location. The other plan for the Arctic is to provide added safety to the community by being proactive, not just for the active calls that are going on, but to be proactive if in the event we hear something's going on. I want to show you just a quick, three-minute video. This is from the Dunwoody Police Department in Georgia, and how they were doing exactly what I'm talking about and being proactive.
I am Detective Blavity with Dunwoody Police Department. I've been working here for, since 2017, been total, working as a law enforcement for nine-and-a-half years, on a daily basis, checking Flock. It is a great tool that we have. The alerts are huge for us when it comes to solving cases. It makes it super easy for us, a lot easier than one was prior. We had been notified by federal agency that they were watching a jewelry robbery crew that were operating all up and down the East Coast. We got notified because they had actually staked out the jewelry store here in our jurisdiction. So, they thought that they could set up something with us to potentially catch them as they're coming to the jewelry store. The information that we were provided was that they knew of a specific vehicle that they were commonly using, but there was another unknown vehicle that they had no idea about. It was very crucial to figure out what that second vehicle was. The jewelry store that they were planning on hitting was in the middle of a Giants Shopping Center. Trying to mitigate any potential casualties was our top priority. So, the morning of, they had eyes on the suspect vehicle in South Atlanta, and they began to move. So, I got on our Flock camera system. We have over 3,000 cameras that we share total, so I had the tag that they had provided for that first suspect vehicle that we knew about, began looking at it, saw two different cameras that it hit off of as they're driving to the interstate. So, I backtracked those cameras just to see if there was any vehicles that were similar, either before or right after that vehicle too, to see if they're caravanning together. And sure enough, we found a blue sedan that was following behind it. Was able to get that tag, and with that tag, was able to disseminate it to our federal agency that we were working with, continued to follow it, and sure enough, it was hitting every Flock camera that was coming into the city. So, we were able to kind of confirm, this is our secondary suspect vehicle. They were then able to get a UC car to follow that vehicle while they placed another UC car on the original suspect vehicle, and they were able to take down both vehicles at the same time, safely, away from any citizen, and they were able to get everybody in custody due to the fact that we were able to get both cars at the same time. And a lot of that was thankfully to our Flock system for being able to identify that secondary car. It would have been chasing a needle in a haystack if we didn't have the camera system there to help us out. We have a couple neighborhoods that have the Flock cameras, and since having those, I can say that our appearance rate on these cases that we get go up dramatically.
So, as you can see, that agency was able to do what exactly we want to do, and that's be proactive. When he was talking about hitting the Flock cameras, he started with cameras in the other jurisdiction, and that's where the advantage of the Flock network allows us to grab a hold of cameras, enter information, and when it hits a camera, we get an alert, so we can follow where that vehicle's going. That's exactly what they did. And being proactive with the O'Fallon Arctic, in my opinion, I believe does follow in the police department's mission statement. This technology and this Arctic will enhance our, help enhance the quality of life for the city of O'Fallon, will help the police department with the protection of life and property, and ultimately, the reduction of crime. So, I think it follows right along in the mission that the police department has already been well-known for. So, what are we proposing? What do we want to build? For those that know the police department, we currently have a simulation room where they can go in and practice in that room. We are recommending to take down that equipment, redeploy that to the joint training facility when that opens up, and we will use that location for the O'Fallon Arctic. That'll allow us to build in several council stations. It will also allow us to expand the communications kitchen into the Arctic room a little bit, so we can have a full-fledged kitchen for both Arctic personnel and the communications division, install a bathroom, an office. We will, of the five council stations that we're proposing in the Arctic, one will be a dedicated radio council, so that during all those special events, in case an emergency situation, we can deploy an emergency communications officer to that location to work from in there, removing that responsibility and that potential additional workload off the communications floor into the Arctic. We will then also have four analyst workstations, which will be equipped to use in case an event would happen, and of course, the large video wall. We've also talked to a company to give us some renderings, because, so we can show you exactly what we are proposing. The reason why you see the railing in this rendering is because the main floor of the Arctic is on a two-inch raised floor, so we can bring all cabling and power underneath the floor to keep us from having to put any poles down the middle to help keep a clearer view of the video wall that's up there. But this is just a few shots to show you what we're proposing to build in that facility and that area. All workstations, just like the emergency communications center, will be set to stand, so it'll give the analysts and the dispatchers the option to sit or stand while they're working. And then, the last rendering is basically just a large window wall, so that basically anybody in the hallway, we can have tours come through, and if we have an operations going on, they don't have to come through the Arctic, which will help keep that additional off the floor, and the operations can keep going. The big question, of course, cost. Everything does come with a cost. I think several know the fact that this is an unbudgeted item, but what we are proposing is the use of current seizure funds for this, the build-out, and the use of use tax for this, of which funds are currently available for that. And with that, that ends that, and I have any question, if you have any questions, we can do that, or I can definitely let the Chief answer those questions.
Can you go back one screen? Okay, there. The seizure funds, Chief, or Vicki, I see that you're wanting to use the seizure funds. How much you getting seizure funds now?
I believe right around $780,000. I believe that's close.
Close to it. So, let me tell you what, I applaud you guys. This is another reason why we're one of the leaders in this region, and thanks, Paul and Chief, and Paul and, do I have to say Mr., do I have to say Lieutenant Cook? For bringing this, you know, I am all for this. This just brings another level of security for our residents and everything else. So, I applaud you guys for this, and I am 150% behind you guys.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Nunery?
Nunery's out here.
Mr. Snowden? Sorry.
No worries.
I was looking at Mike when I was going, I'm like, Mike, Mike, okay.
You certainly could have called me worse. Mike Nunery's a good man. I wanted to ask you, though, Chief, the reason the seizure funds and use tax are in combination, why, why are we doing that? Why couldn't we use more seizure funds or more use tax?
Right. So, the way the seizure funds are able to use, we can only use them for materials, we can't use them for labor. So, at first, we wanted to fund everything out of seizure funds, but that's just not possible with the DOJ guidelines. So, we consulted with Vicki, and, you know, once we got that clarification, we had to split the bills out, and the materials will come out of the seizure funds, and the, or the materials will come, the materials will come out of the seizure funds, and the labor will come out of the use tax part of it. Sorry. Took me a minute to get there.
Ms. Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor. So, you mentioned, I think it's St. Louis County has something similar to this already, and I understand how we can work across Flock systems, but how, if at all, can we work more closely with them in the future, you know, now that we have the same sort of system, now that we'll have the same system set up? I mean, is that going to be a cooperative effort? Is, just talk to me about that a little bit, if you don't mind.
We'll work with anybody, and I think St. Louis County, and they do the Overwatch for St. Louis City, all municipalities in St. Louis County, and, you know, I think they're more of a higher level, your homicides, all that other stuff, will help out. They told us at a Chief's meeting, if you guys have pursuits, if you guys have homicides, we will preempt your radio and talk to you and tell you on our systems what we can see to help guide you to where you need to go. And I can tell you, over the last three years, that's happened zero times. So, you know, like I said earlier, with the mayor and council's direction to be a leader in the area, and to put this on a more granular level, where we can protect our citizens, our residents, we can get into the schools, we can get into the business corridors with these cameras, and just start tracking stuff in our city and take care of our residents and, you know, our community, so.
Ms. Ragsdale?
Thank you, Mayor. I love when you guys are doing things to protect our residents and keep all of us safer. This is actually probably more of a question for Vicki, so I'm sorry to put you on the spot. My question is, since they were talking about the fact that this is unbudgeted, is there plenty of room for us to be able to cover something like this?
There is. With the seizure funds, the seizure funds are not able to be budgeted until we determine what the police department wants to purchase out of them, so this is an appropriate use for them. And with our use tax revenues, they are coming in very well this year, and I almost hate to say that, I don't want to jinx us, but they have come in extremely well. So, this is not going to be a problem to take it out of current year revenues. Thank you.
And just let you know, this would be a mid-year adjustment, mid-year budget adjustment too, so. Councilmember Boyer?
Are there other systems that will be replaced with this, so that we could actually decommission those and save that money?
Mike, I don't know if you want to talk on this, but the way I understand it, all of our systems, the county intersection cameras, the MODOC cameras, the Flock system, it'll come through our drones, our drones will be able to project to this. Our, every camera in this city, through City Hall, through our parks departments, can come into this camera, and we can monitor everything. So, it's not going to take anything away, what it's going to do is going to take everything and bring it together into one.
So, it integrates everything to one thing? It's not replacing anything? Everything we have out there is going to be out there. Is there an annual cost for this? Because this is the implementation, what's the annual ongoing?
Yeah, we estimate, and correct me if I'm wrong, it'll be about $100, or...
Yeah, a total of $100, a little about $100,000.
Just over $100,000 a year to keep everything running. And I don't want to end on that either. I mean, there's, if this is 1.0, there's still 2.0, and there's 3.0, because you can actually, in the future, we can add boxes that contain drones in the city, and have drones oversight controlled from this center within about 30 seconds, which is drastically going to reduce your response times. We can put live 911 through there, so the officers going to call, will actually hear the 911 call come through, and they'll be able to hear everything.
Is there any AI built into this system, or it's probably too pushing the envelope?
There is some AI built into the tech, this technology, along with the other technology we currently have in communicate, there is currently AI built into this system, along with the other systems we have in communications now.
Ms. Cook?
That is definitely the wave of the future.
So, how will this work along with St. Peters, or Lake St. Louis? Will we be able, will they be able to get into our system, or will we all work together? How will that work?
We've had some low-level conversations with those departments, with St. Peters, with Lake St. Louis, and the kind of roadmap on that is, if we're monitoring this, and we hear something happen in your city, we're going to let our dispatchers know, to let your dispatchers know, to let your officers know how that is going to be. your dispatchers know, to let your officers know how that is going to affect you and what you need to be on the lookout for. Conversely, if they wanted to partner with us and put a body at the table, too, we would not be opposed to that. We work with anybody. And we're all on the same team, right? We might wear different uniforms, but at the end of the day, we're all on the same team. Police departments, citizens, councils, our goal is to reduce crime and provide a great quality of life for our residents. And if they want to come be a part of it, we've got seats at the table.
Sounds good. And then another question, and I don't know if this is kind of, so I had a phone call this week about a situation, people that live on the borderline between kind of St. Peters and O'Fallon, they call 911, they get dispatched over to St. Peters, and then it turns out it's actually O'Fallon, and we're talking about, you know, minutes that could be crucial to saving someone's life. Will this kind of eliminate that because you were saying this will kind of fill in some gaps of locations and different things like that?
That kind of really depends on the situation itself, ma'am, on that one. If it's, one, a caller that they're not really certain where they at, absolutely. That's what this system is designed to do, is fill in those gaps and find out exactly where that call's coming from. Sadly, there are times, and this happened even in my last 911 center I came from, sometimes it's a misroute within the 911 system. And in those situations, we work with the county to make that fix, and that's usually right away as well. So it really depends on the situations, but yes, this system is designed to do just that.
Right, because, you know, those are concerns that people have that are kind of living on that borderline and minutes count. So, okay, perfect. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Councilwoman Taylor.
Yeah, I was wondering if you had to hire additional staff to run this system?
So right now, we're kind of at a crawl, walk, run kind of pace. So we have an analyst right now in the detective bureau that we would just move over into this for now. And as Paul said, all the communications officers would be trained, too. So in case that analyst wasn't on duty and something big did happen, one of those dispatchers, as long as they're fully staff, could come across into that room and pick up where they need to pick up.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else? Can you just kind of explain, you were talking about, you know, school cameras and commercial cameras and everything else that it could actually feed into this Arctic system?
Yeah, you want this one?
Yeah, let Mike, I can get Mike up there.
All right, so the unique place we're at with schools is we don't have just one school district. So we have access now to Zumwalt School cameras, we have access to Wentzville School cameras, but they're on different systems. So this system would allow us to put it into one spot so that if we need to look at a Wentzville, you know, if we need to look at Liberty High or Frontier, we could just pull it up in this system. Same with Zumwalt. In terms of, with the businesses, most of these products or solutions offer a product that's a, it's a box, basically, that they put on their network, that they then give us access to their camera feeds when we need them. It's not us going into their camera and looking at it, it's, they're giving it to us and giving us access to it through the system. So that's kind of down the road a little bit. Once we get set up and go in and, you know, show that the system's working well, we can go out with the help of FLOCK and get businesses on board to give us access to their cameras. You know, obviously, we're not going to want access to everything they have. You know, some of these businesses have cameras, you know, hundreds of cameras. We don't need all that. We need the primary ones at the entrance and exits and in the parking lots. And we can do all that into the system and just go straight to your point. It's going to pull it all into one spot so that we're not going to one side for, you know, Zumwalt and one for Walmart and still going into FLOCK. So it puts it in one spot for the analyst or the dispatchers to be able to access it and get it pretty quickly.
And I can tell you, I think this is a big help for our economic development team. So if a business wants to come in, they see this and they know that they're going to be safe. They know that our police department's going to work with them, and to me, I think that is just a big, big plus for our economic development team to say, hey, we're here to protect you guys, we're here, you know, and that just keeps the bad guys and bad girls out of those businesses because they know they're going to get caught. And with our prosecuting attorneys and everybody else in St. Charles County, you know, you come in, you're going to do the time. So, anybody else? Big question now. You all in favor of this?
Yes.
Go for it.
Thank you. I just piggyback off what the mayor said. We couldn't do this without the relationship we have with the city council. You guys have been very supportive of us. You support everything we do, and we're truly grateful for that. And it really is Team O'Fallon, and thank you for tonight. Appreciate it.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Any other items of consideration? Oh, Mr. Cook, do you have anything to say?
No, I just wanted to be too sure.
Well, I need to get you on camera, so do you want to say anything?
No. This is like going from playing checkers to playing chess. It really is. It's, I didn't realize what we were getting into starting it, but the more I keep learning. Oh, I apologize. I didn't realize what we were getting into when we first started this, and the chief explained it to me. And this is kind of like going from, again, playing checkers to playing chess. I've been exposed to a lot of interesting aspects in the use of the technology and just what they were talking about as far as the camera use and the resident input. Again, this is one of those things where we're just going randomly into people's cameras. Anything you do, you have to contribute. And we have a phenomenal pool of residents who already participate in our voluntary camera registry program, you know, which we reach out to them, and it gives us very quick returns. And this just speeds up investigations, you know, whether it's a real-time investigation going on or something that we did get after the fact. So again, the more I keep learning, the more I'm kind of excited to learn what we still don't know.
So what do you think the rest of the police officers, I can guarantee you, they're all for this because it just basically keeps them more safe.
The biggest part of that is just, is the learning curve like I've had as far as just understanding the capabilities. And I think that's one of those things, the more, the more we get done, and as soon as you start to get using it and you're seeing it, it's kind of like when you're...
And it keeps them safe.
Oh, absolutely. The applications that are involved in that single pane of glass that the chief was talking about is what makes it so efficient for real-time stuff, as well as, like I said, long-term investigations. So it's, there's a component for everybody involved, to include the residents and the businesses, to, again, for all of us to work together and just work more efficiently.
Lieutenant Cook, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much, sir.
All right. Any other items of consideration? Seeing none, like I have most of a close session, 610, 0211, legal action, cause of action, litigation involving public governmental body or any confidential or private communications between a public government body and its representative and its special attorneys?
Not just any law, literally.
610, 0212, leasing, purchasing, or sale of real estate. And 610, 02112, sealed bids related documents till the bids are open, and sealed proposals related documents or any documents related to negotiated contract until a contract is executed or all proposals are rejected.
Ragsdale.
Motion by Councilwoman Ragsdale. Second.
Wexler.
Second by Wexler. Roll call, Katie.
Councilmember Cook?
Excuse me, mayor. If I could, before...
Councilmember Taylor.
Hold on, hold on.
Before that, could I ask that the council consider amending the motion to include subsection 15 concerning proprietary innovations?
Is your microphone on?
I'm sorry.
It's not. Could I ask that the council consider expanding the motion to include subsection 610.021 sub 15 for meetings relating to scientific and technological innovations in which the owner has a proprietary interest? Ms. Ragsdale. Mr. Wexler.
Wexler.
All right, roll call.
All right, Councilmember Cook?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Bib?
Yes.
Councilmember Ragsdale?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Wexler?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
All right, we'll be up in the community room at 6:15. One call to May 8, 2025, O'Fallon City Council meeting to order. Roll call, Bess.
Mayor Hennessy?
Present.
Councilmember Wexler?
Present.
Councilmember Roth?
He's excused.
Councilmember Boyer?
Present.
Councilmember Thompson?
Present.
Councilmember Bib?
Present.
Councilmember Cuskella?
He's excused.
Councilmember Kewen?
He's excused.
Councilmember Taylor?
Present.
Councilmember Cook?
Present.
Councilmember Ragsdale?
Present.
If anyone would please stand for the invocation by Pastor Rick DeMant with First Free Will Baptist Church of O'Fallon filed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Cook.
Father, we want to bow before you this evening to give you thanks for your institutions that you've created, Lord, for us. We thank you for our government, Lord, for leaders. We pray that you will give them wisdom as they discuss and make decisions that affect all of us. Lord, I pray that you will help us to be good neighbors by being mindful and considered of one another, that, Lord, in everything, we might bring honor and glory to you. So, Father, we ask that you will have your leadership tonight as business is conducted here, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Through the flag of the United States of America and through the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Folks, you have an agenda in front of you. What's the pleasure?
Motion to approve, Ragsdale.
Second, Bib. Motion by Councilwoman Ragsdale, second by Councilman Bib. Questions or comments? On favor?
Aye.
Any pose? Motion passes. Chief?
Good evening, mayor and city council members. Tonight is my honor to introduce Officer Michael LaFiori. Michael is a dedicated law enforcement professional who graduated from Rosary High School in 2003 and later earned his bachelor's degree in business management from Webster University in 2019. After completing the Eastern Missouri Police Academy in 2011, he went on to serve with the St. Louis County Police Department for 11 years, including seven years in the K-9 unit, where he built an impressive track record of service, partnership, and community commitment. He then realized he needed to come to the greatest police department in the world, so he applied at the O'Fallon Police Department. Outside of police work, Michael is a passionate golfer, bocce ball player, sand volleyball player, and fisherman. He also gives his time at Five Acres Animal Shelter volunteering in the K-9 house, helping dogs waiting for their forever homes. And like many of us, he's known to unwind with a good documentary or TV series when time allows. Tonight, we're pleased to have Michael's family with us, including his wife Cheryl, their children Mason and Cody, AJ couldn't be here tonight, his parents Salvatore and Nancy, and his mother-in-law Shirley. Please join me in welcoming Officer Michael LaFiori to Team O'Fallon. Okay, I can do both, if you want me to do both. Members of the board, I look forward to serving this community, keeping the citizens safe, and bringing my 11 years of police service to this department to benefit everything. So thank you very much for this honor. Appreciate it.
And the whole team, come on. Come on. It's my honor to give a proclamation to these young ladies, whereas the elected officials proudly recognize the Fort Zumwalt West High School 24-25 Varsity Dance Team for their dedication, discipline, and talent, as well as extraordinary achievement of back-to-back state championships. Whereas the exceptional team rose to the challenge of rebuilding after graduation of many of their senior leaders, proving that true excellence lies not only in experience but in teamwork, resilience, and an unshakable belief in one another. Whereas the Fort Zumwalt West Varsity Team has 15 members, including one senior, six juniors, six sophomores, and two freshmen. Whereas the seasoned Zumwalt West Varsity Dance Team earned third place in hip-hop, first place in jazz at the Lindbergh Invitational, first place in both hip-hop and jazz, as well as Choreography Award for Jazz in the highest overall scoring routines at the Melville Competition, first place in both hip-hop and jazz at the Lee Summit North Competition, 14th place in Division One Small Jazz, and fifth place in Division One Small Hip-Hop at the national level, and first place in both hip-hop and jazz state competition, earning them a first place overall in the prestigious title of Division 5A State Champions for the second consecutive year. Whereas under the inspiring leadership of their dedicated coaches who have guided, motivated, and nurtured these athletes at every step of the way, the team has not only defended their title, but done so with grace, heart, and unmatched skill. And whereas the unwavering support of these athletes are given by families, friends, and Fort Zumwalt community has been a vital part of this journey, providing encouragement, love, and strength to every triumph and challenge along the way. Now therefore, I, Bill Hennessy, mayor, along with the great city of O'Fallon and the city council of Missouri, do hereby recognize Fort Zumwalt West High School 24-25 Varsity Dance Team and ask you to join us congratulating them on their outstanding accomplishments. And just to let the one senior, where is the senior at?
Right there.
All right. Now the rest of you? Okay, it's the three-peat. All right? Okay? No pressure, but I want a three-peat. All right?
We'll work on it.
You want to say a few words?
Yeah, I mean, it definitely takes not just myself, but my, the other coaches that coach side by side with me, my wonderful parents that support this program. We couldn't do it without you guys either. And the 15 young ladies standing behind me, they are definitely some of the hardest-working athletes that I have ever had the pleasure of working with. So very proud of them, and yeah, hey, let's make it three. So, thank you very, very much. You dropped your sticker.
Officer said he gave you a sticker.
Junior officer or not?
Oh, you're a junior officer now, huh?
Oh, there she is. Ms. Ragsdale?
Thank you, mayor. I was actually just appointed the liaison for the DARE program, DARE MIAC, and had no idea how busy it was going to be. Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday night, I had DARE graduations. I had one last week, and I have to tell you, the DARE program has been so phenomenal. I have enjoyed it thoroughly, just in the short time that I've been on there already. And I'm not going to tell you about it, I'm going to let our experts tell you about it. We have DARE essay readers from three different schools tonight. The first one from Progress South Elementary School, Rianne. Rianne?
Rianne.
See, I'm terrible with names. Rianne, and I'm going to butcher the last name, too. So Rianne, just come on up with your family and do us all a favor and read your fabulous essay because it was good.
No, I'm not saying the last name. I'm asking. So first, I'd like to say a few words...
So, first, I'd like to say a few words. I'd like to introduce my parents. My mom, you can say your name, because it's disrespectful to say your name, so.
Brian.
And I would also like to thank my DARE officer for teaching me about DARE all through my fifth-grade year. Also, my first sentence is a representation, so I do know how to speak. And this is not an awkward, anxious kind of thing. It's a representation, kind of like a social thing, so. Uh, yeah. Dear future Rianne, congratulations on graduating high school. Boom! I bet you were just very confused on how I was just talking. This is a clear representation on what it sounds like to be drunk. For those who don't know what I stated, I said the sentence, "Dear future Rianne, congratulations on graduating high school. I hope you still want to be a registered nurse in the military, because I would accept free college any day." Just joking. I really hope in the future you are responsible, and I am here to talk to you about how almost eight years ago, Officer Bryant came to teach you all about DARE. First, I would like to talk about Lesson Two. For those of you who do not know this lesson, it was all about underage drinking and the results of drugs, tobacco, and alcohol. To start, at this time, I really did not like school, but DARE made it really fun. And I want to remind you that even if it's odd to you, don't take any kind of smoking devices or drugs. Don't accept it, especially if you're underage. As of 2024, there were 87,000 deaths related to drugs and 4,900,000 relating to tobacco. I don't know about you, but I don't want to die. So, just always remember to be responsible. The next paragraph is about Lesson Four. It was my second favorite lesson. For those of you who are staring at the wall during this lesson, it was about peer pressure. Peer pressure can lead to addiction, and even if you think one cigarette won't hurt, it will. I also think this lesson was one of my favorites, because we got to act out scenes of peer pressure. It helps make it stick in my mind, but I mostly liked it, because it was fun to see what everybody made. Now, with the bottom of the pyramid is Lesson Five. If you get the joke, then you're a real one. Anyway, Lesson Five talks about stress and ways to deal with stress. This helped me with school, jet, and just my day-to-day life. For most people, including me, stress can cause a setback in a lot of things you do. It can creep its weight into anyone's life. So, it's good to know some ways to take care of it. This can also be important, because you don't want to get so stressed out that you forget to pay your bills. I don't think getting evicted sounds very fun. Some ways to deal with stress are taking deep breaths, getting exercise, and getting lots of sleep. Using your tools also helps make sure that you never get mad over a laundry machine. Now that you hopefully finished reading this, I want to remind you that you have so much potential, and I don't want you to throw that all out the window by getting into drinking, jugging, and smoking. Finally, if you ever get into a peer pressure situation, a stressful situation, or somebody offering "you want to smoke" kind of situation, maybe even your washer or dryer isn't working. Think about DARE and say, "How could this change my life?"
You're not done yet, young lady. Congratulations again. Nice job. So, is it more nervous doing it here, or?
At school.
Or graduating school?
At graduation.
Congratulations, Emily. There's a DARE show for you. Nice job. Congratulations, guys.
Thank you.
So, I should mention that each of these readers today had to read their essays in front of their entire fifth grade at their respective schools. And I'm sure that was really, really nerve-wracking. So, what she was just telling us was that this was not nearly as bad as having to read in front of the entire fifth grade at her school. So, there is that. Our next reader, I'm very proud to say, is Brayden Ritchie from Assumption Catholic School. So, Brayden and your family, come on up and join us and introduce who you have with you tonight.
I have my mom, and I have my dad.
And then who's this?
Officer Brian. Dear future Brayden, congratulations on graduating high school. I hope you have good grades and in college, you accomplish your goal by making college baseball. I hope you play for your dream college, Illinois, and getting drafted to the MLB. But I want to remind you that Officer Brian came in when you were in fifth grade. My favorite lesson was Lesson Seven. I liked Lesson Seven, because it was about verbal and nonverbal communication. And it was funny, because we had volunteers go up in front of the class and give examples. But you always have to remember, if someone offers you a cigarette, you say no, because 480,000 people, you're going to die from cigarettes. Also, 490,000 people, you're going to die from tobacco. Also, do not get around people who are smoking, because 19,000 people, you're going to die from secondhand smoking. Also, do not drink while driving, because 13,000 people, you're going to die from that. Or do not ride with your drunk friend. My second favorite lesson was Lesson Five, because of how we got to use the drunk goggles for the first time. It was also funny, because we got to learn about stress, so you could help yourself in the future if you're in that situation. I learned you could do counting exercise, or just play outside, or take a break. It was also funny when he said he kicked a dry into his garage and broke it, but all he had to do was pull a sock out of the tube. My third favorite lesson is Lesson Eight. I liked Lesson Eight, because it was about bullying, and I think it was a good lesson, because we know not to bully people in the future, because it could really hurt their feelings, or what to do if you're getting bullied in the future. We also learned about the five W's when we report bullying: who, what, when, where, and why. But when you do that, make sure you tell a safe adult, tattling is harmless when one is not hurt or bullied, just trying to get them in trouble. Reporting is serious things to the teacher, for example, getting hurt or getting bullied. My conclusion, you have to remember about all the lessons Officer Brian taught you. It is fun, because of the DARE box. Another is Officer Brian passing out candy, also when he yells, "What's a day?" Then we yell, "Dare day!" I like that, because it got us ready to learn. It was also fun when he let us use his drunk goggles. Those are all the reasons I like Officer Brian and DARE. Sincerely, Brayden Ritchie.
So, Brayden, just for the record, I love Major League Baseball, too, so I'm really proud that you're going to go play. So, our last reader for this evening, I'm not even going to attempt to pronounce his last name, because that's kind of been a joke with all of us. Maybe he can say his last name. But Nico from Forest Park Elementary School. Come on up, Nico and family. And make sure you introduce everybody.
So, with me, I have my mom and my dad, and my sisters Lena and Mia, and Officer Brian.
Can't forget him.
Dear 18-year-old Nico, hi, Nico. It's your 11-year-old self. I want to congratulate you, because you are almost in college. Can you believe that? That is a very big accomplishment, and you should be proud of yourself. Good job on getting a scholarship. I hope you're still wanting to be a civil engineer, and you better still be playing soccer. You probably are still best friends with Jamison. After all, we have been best friends since kindergarten. I'm learning Greek right now, but you are probably already fluent in Greek. I've only been to Greece three times, but you have definitely been a lot more. After college, if you don't get the professional soccer contract, then you should be a civil engineer. But remember to finish school. Congratulations on getting straight A's all through elementary school, but you also have to remember what Officer Brian told you in Miss Wilkes' class in fifth grade. Let's talk about some DARE lessons I think will help you. First of all, I want to talk about Lesson One, the importance of responsibility. It taught me how I am responsible for my actions. Officer Brian told me that it was important to take responsibility for my actions and to be a good person. Good people treat themselves and others with respect. They make choices that will have a positive effect on their life and the world around them. I hope you are making responsible choices that will help you reach all the goals you have set for yourself. DARE Lesson Three taught me that all choices have consequences, good or bad. Staying away from drugs and alcohol will be very important to keep your body healthy and fit, especially if you want to keep playing soccer at a high level. Your choices don't only affect you, though, they can affect others, too. If you get tied up in drugs or alcohol, you may influence others to make bad choices that will negatively affect their lives. Making choices that have a positive impact on yourself and others will keep you on the path to success. In DARE Lesson Six, we learned to communicate with confidence. When you make good choices and you see positive consequences, you'll gain the confidence you need to stand up for what you know is right. If you're confident on the inside, then you will show confidence on the outside as well. You'll have a good posture, and you will speak clearly. This will help make the people around you view you as a leader, make them less likely to pressure you or bully you, and give you the opportunity to be a positive role model. I challenge you to use these DARE lessons to help you stay healthy, so you can still play soccer and follow your dreams. Staying healthy is important for whatever you decide to do, but remember, be safe and be responsible.
I want to thank all of the DARE readers, and this was my first time as liaison with council, and it is Officer Brian's last time, because he's moving on to bigger and better things here in O'Fallon. So, Officer Brian, do you want to say anything real fast? Just real fast, real, real fast.
They make me say something every time, and you'd think I'd prepare something. But what kind of DARE officer would I be if I can't speak off the cuff in front of a bunch of people? She said, "Moving on to bigger and better." I don't know if they're bigger or better. I've had a lot of privilege being in front of the kids. When you're in front of a group like that, the amount of bravery they show to even be here tonight is awe-inspiring, really. She talked about reading at graduation, but it wasn't just that. In order to get up here, all the kids had to create an essay, then they presented it to their classes, and then their classes got to choose who they wanted to represent them. So, what you see here tonight is the best of the best. They're the ones that they wanted to represent them and their school. So, the amount of bravery that they show is really, like I said, kind of awe-inspiring. As you mentioned, it is my last one, so you guys will be forever in my memory. This will be the last one that I have. So, thank you, guys, and you guys all did fantastic.
And I just want to thank Brian, Sergeant Shepard now, as the kids call him Officer Brian. It's now Sergeant Brian. So, Brian, thank you for your service to the DARE program, and we look forward to you helping the two new DARE officers, too. So, thank you, sir. So, next, I'd like to have a motion to ratify my appointment of Ella Rose Patterson to serve on the Culture Arts Commission as a commission member, filling the remainder of an unexpired term until April of 2027.
Motion to approve. Wexler.
Motion by Councilman Wexler. Do I have a second? Same by Councilman Bib. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, I'd like to have a motion to ratify my appointment of Leah Girardto to serve on this Culture Arts Commission as a member, filling the remainder of her next term until April of 2026.
Ragsdale.
Motion by Councilwoman Ragsdale, second.
Taylor, second.
Second by Councilwoman Taylor. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, I'd like to have a motion to ratify my appointment of Calvin Holting to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission as a commission member, Ward One, with the term expiring of April of 2029.
Wexler.
Motion by Councilman Wexler, second.
Taylor.
Second by Councilwoman Taylor. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next is citizens' comments. We have two speakers. Mr. Deanoff.
Good evening, members of the City Council. My name is Arne C. A.C. Deanoff, City Public Advocate. First of all, I'd like to go over some things that are hidden within the overlooked consent agenda. I think it's a wrong public policy. I think it doesn't disclose items to the public, and I think it hides transparency. Number one is Resolution A, police vehicle build equipment and installation in the amount of $212,150 to EDWR. Resolution B is $133,000 each year for asphalt concrete in a multi-year agreement. Resolution C is water-activated polyurethane resin, $90,000 a year times three, for $270,000. On the other agenda for resolutions, Resolution D is $53,532 for water treatment chemicals, $782,000 for an agreement for volumetric concrete mixer trucks, trying to figure out exactly why we don't buy some used ones rather than bring new equipment. Burns &amp; McDonald makes a mint off of our city instead of the 12 engineers that we pay over $100,000 apiece that are on staff, and why we don't bring these engineering services in-house, why we're paying a supplemental agreement of $101,000 to Burns &amp; McDonald. And finally, Resolution G is $1,260 for digit ticket for code enforcement enhancements. Now, on your agenda is a bill, which I'll be talking about now in two weeks from now. I'm highly opposed to giving this ideal location of Missouri 79 and I-70 Aldi Incorporated for a warehouse. It's going to create a mere 34 to 35 jobs. How many hamburgers over the 10-year period of the tax abatement, which are giving away corporate money in lieu of us floating bonds of $100 million? Yes, mark that for the record, $100 million special sweetheart deal for Aldi, who's a German company, not an American company, a German company, in issuing industrial revenue bonds. The city will take ownership of the building, and it will be filed on file with the St. Charles County Recorder of Deeds Office, that the city of O'Fallon is the sole owner of the property. It will in turn lease back the property to Aldi's, a German company. Warehouse space and related business will pay half of their personal property and real estate tax liability to the city.
Yeah, 15 seconds.
By they cut out many other political subdivisions. These tax abatements are out of control, cutting out lots of vital public services in other governmental districts from 2026 to 2025. Sales tax exemptions for the state of Missouri.
Mr. Deanoff.
And I could go.
Mr. Deanoff, your time's up, sir. Next speaker is Ms. Jamie Crock.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Jamie Crock. I live at 1611 Platinum Court. This is my last meeting as a 69-year citizen of O'Fallon, and I only do this, because I want all of the O'Fallon citizens to realize that all of these positive things are happening in O'Fallon. Don't let Mr. Deanoff deter you. We have to spend money to do good things. We have a great city council. We have great people who work for our city. Our police department is one of the best, new and upcoming things that they were talking about tonight at the workshop. We have a new facility where the police departments all over the state of Missouri and the United States are going to be able to come and train. We have a new public works building in the works, where we're going to be able to do a better job of maintaining all of our vehicles. And I just want everybody to know that O'Fallon, for the past 69 years, has been the best city, and I hope that you guys continue to keep it that way, because I'm going to be watching. And you know I know everybody's phone number and everybody's email address. So, you guys, please, 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 keep O'Fallon positive. There's too much negativity in the world today. We've got to have positivity in O'Fallon.
Thank you. Jamie, before you leave, I just want to thank you for your 69 years of living in O'Fallon, your years of service to this great city. From whatever boarding commission you sat on, I know you've had a hand in making this a great city. So, on behalf of myself, the staff, and the elected officials, I want to say thank you.
Thank you.
We have no other speakers. So, that brings us to Ward Reports. Ward Four, Ms. Taylor.
Yeah, tonight, I want to talk about roads in my ward. Nobody's probably surprised about that, because I've been talking about it for two weeks. But it's probably the number-one concern since I've taken office, and through the many messages and emails that I've received. And, you know, after campaigning and walking the streets, every single street myself the past couple months, I can say, you know, that they're right. We absolutely need to do something about our roads. Just last, well, about a week and a half ago, I received an email from one of the residents who had a longstanding problem of a road in front of his house with water leakage. in his, in front of his house with water leakage. He has documented this a while, and I come to find out, which I kind of knew, that when our roads, when our area were built, they were built not to our current code. They were built right on top of dirt with no drainage system, and this is causes hydrostatic pressure and can cause water to leak and pool out, and in the wintertime, it becomes ice over there. And this particular resident's wife has fallen multiple times because of this issue. So it's definitely a public safety concern, and it's a liability to the city. I mean, roads are, you know, one of the basic necessities for a city, right? It's, it's the arteries of our city. It's where that takes our children to school, our residents to work, and our first responders to emergencies. So it's also one of the number one issues that I've heard from our residents. So it should be, I believe, the number one issue for this council. I've also heard there's other problems with different chemicals that we had used in the past on these roads and that have caused deterioration in things. And yeah, it's just a big problem I think we need to address. I think we need to call on the council, do some real look at our budget. I know they said something like $4 million is in our budget for roads right now, and I've talked to neighboring cities, and they kind of have the same with half the population. They have the same budget for this, and they're still trying to catch up on this. So I was listening tonight. I heard we do very well with the use tax. So I would like to really call on the council to actually look at this budget, make our priority, because roads, we have to make a priority. So that's what I wanted to talk about. That's all.
All right. And Amanda, just to let you know, we will be meeting, I believe, in June for, to go over what our wishes for the 26 budget is. So that will be your chance to say, this is what you want. So just to let you know that we'll be meeting in June for basically the council to say, here's my wish list for the 26 budget. And just remember, you're only one of 10. So, I mean, you've got, you've got nine other people that's going to want a wish list also. So just give you a heads up. So, Ward five.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one thing tonight. I want to remind all the seniors out there that the utility tax rebate program has started. It's, it's up here every day from 9:00 to 4:00. It will run until May 30th. So right here at City Hall, they'll be glad to help you. Just bring your receipts in. So all the seniors, please bring your stuff in, and the staff will help you. Thank you.
Ms. Ragsdale.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to welcome Officer LaFiora. I hope I said his name right. And thank you to Chief Manini for inviting some of us to the Officers' Prayer Breakfast a couple weeks ago. That was, as usual, a very moving experience, one that I can never forget. I wanted to mention the police training center ribbon-cutting we had on Friday. Today, we had a ribbon-cutting for Mario's Cafe on Main Street. And if you have not been there, he is one of the most friendly people you will ever meet. We had so much fun today. Next Tuesday is the ribbon-cutting for the library down on Highway K at 11 o'clock. We do have two upcoming HOA meetings. One is on Thursday, May 15th. Oh, my gosh, I forgot to write down which subdivisions these were for. But I do have an HOA on Thursday, May 15th, at 6 o'clock, and then another one, but I can't tell you who, on Tuesday, May 20th, at 6 o'clock. Don't forget Armed Forces Day Ceremony on Saturday, May 17th, and I will be giving the city address. So I hope to see veterans and friends of veterans there. And on behalf of the Missouri Extension Service, from June 1st through June 15th is Neighborhoods Arts Week. If anybody would like more information about that, I would be happy to share that with you. And although my mother has passed away, I do want to wish all the mothers out there Happy Mother's Day this coming Sunday. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And Armed Forces Day is at 11:00 a.m. at the Walk.
Thank you.
Brings us to Ward one, Mr. Wexler.
Yep. I would like to first thank Jamie. I know you've been an anchor in the O'Fallon community, and I know you'll be missed by many. I'd also like to highlight the new stackable flower baskets and hanging baskets that we have along Main Street. If you haven't taken a walk or taken a look at those, they're beautiful. So get out there and take a walk and look at those. And then also, a quick reminder about Public Works Day. It's May 21st from 10:00 to 1:00 at Ozzy Smith's Sports Complex. That's all I got.
Thanks, sir. Ward two.
Thank you, Mayor. Jamie, thank you. We're really going to miss you. Thank you for everything that you've done and for keeping things positive in the city and highlighting all the great things that the city has to offer. A couple of other things I just want to mention, let's see, we, the police department is doing Cop on a Rooftop on May 16th from 6:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., and this is helping to aware, raise awareness for, and funds for the Special Olympics of Missouri. So check them out. It's going to be at the Duncan up here on the north end of town, off of Highway K, across from the Walmart. And then another fun thing that the police department is doing is Cops and Bobbers, which is a, you know, fishing with the cops at Fort Zumwalt Park on the 17th, Saturday, May 17th, from 9:00 to noon. So just wanted to make you aware of those things, and I think that's it.
Thanks. Chief, is the Cops and Bobbers sold out, or?
Not yet.
Not yet? So they just need to call the police department?
They can call us, and I think there's an online registration. If not, it should be open soon.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Boyer.
Yeah, just Jamie, again, thank you for all that you've done, and we'll take that challenge to remain positive and keep O'Fallon great. Also, those that are over 65, backing Councilmember Cook here, we've got the tax rebates. Fox Two did a story on it, so you can also see it on there. That'd be cool. And then kind of backing Councilmember Taylor, my two weeks, I have received a lot of requests about roads. On our website, there's a place, The Citizens First, you can actually put in a ticket. This will give us a sense of how many people need help, and that will help us with our budgeting. So if you have problems, it's a place to go.
Thank you, sir. Last but not least, Mr. Bibb.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, for the Cop on a Roof, is there any way, like, we can throw balloons, or like, every dozen doughnuts you buy, you can get to throw two balloons up?
I'm sure we could work something out.
And it sounds like a lot of fun. I feel like people would really come to play, like, throw water balloons at the police. I think Dunkin' Donuts would need like a Starbucks line or something. Jamie, you will be dearly missed. Thank you for all of your years in O'Fallon and for coming and bringing a positive light to all of our meetings. I can't explain how you being gone will affect all of us, but we will be thinking of you, and I wish you could take the rain with you, or at least make it go somewhere else. But thank you, Jamie.
Thanks, sir. Brings us to City Administration Report, Mr. Snowden.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the contributions of some staff members who are reaching milestone anniversaries. Project Management Administrative Assistant Vicki Usuri and Police Officer Robert Fincher have been with O'Fallon for 10 years. Environmental Services Fleet Coordinator James Schuster has been a valued member of our team for 25 years now. So I want to thank all three of these individuals for being such an integral part of Team O'Fallon. Randy Clark, our Stormwater Management Coordinator, wanted to pass on that he has recently spearheaded two stream cleanup events. The first was in the creek behind CarShield Field with volunteers from Veritas Academy, and the second was the creek behind the former Texas Roadhouse site on Mexico Loop near Highway K. That was cleaned out by various groups and families. All told, 56 volunteers removed 1,760 pounds of debris from around and in our waterways. I want to thank Volunteer Services for helping to make the connection between our volunteers and the task, and to thank all of our volunteers for their assistance. And that's all I have tonight, sir.
Thank you, sir. We have no business. Any questions or comments on the Committee and Commission reports? CNN will be stand as read. Questions or comments on the consent calendar? It's a pleasure.
Motion to approve, Ragsdale.
Second, Bibb.
Motion by Councilwoman Ragsdale, second by Councilwoman Bibb. Councilmembers, please cast your vote. Hold on. May as well adjourn.
There's no light, so it's not working right now.
All right. You ready for roll call?
Councilmember Wexler?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bibb?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
Yes.
Councilmember Ragsdale?
Yes.
Seven yes votes. Consent calendar's been approved. Brings us to new business. This is a public comment. Consider approval in ordinance granting a conditional use permit to the owner of Dutch Bros to allow a coffee shop with a drive-thru in a C2 general business district under certain conditions with on a certain tract of land located at 100 Crossroads Plaza within the great city of O'Fallon, Missouri. Is there someone here to present this? If you give us your name and address for the record, please.
Scott Felton, engineer with Premier Design Group, 100 Midland Park Drive in Winston, Missouri. We're here to request a condition use permit and site plan approval for Dutch Bros located at 100 Crossroads Plaza. It's almost an exact replica of the new one on Bryan Road. Happy to answer any questions or comments that you guys have.
Questions for Scott? Hopefully, this won't be as busy as the one at Bryan Road.
If it's anything like any of the other ones around the country, it's going to be pretty close.
Good. All right. Brings us to, if you step aside, this is a public comment, Mr. Deanoff.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Arne C., AC Deanoff, City Public Advocate. First of all, I'd like to welcome Dutch Bros for the second time. They're an outscenning company. They generate sales tax, which is greatly needed for the future of our city, to pay for essential city services. There's some issues at their Bryan Road location with some backups into the roadway and causing some traffic issues. I want to ensure that it, the Highway K location, just north of Missouri Highway N, that this location doesn't back up onto busy Missouri Highway K. We want to make sure that there's, I believe, according to the plans, there's two stacking lines, I believe, with six vehicles apiece. But with their first few weeks of the nuance of the, of the business, it's probably going to be backing up towards Missouri Highway K. I would hope that they're instructing their staff to ensure, to try to move those cars through the line as fast as possible to not make public safety impediments or a backup onto Missouri Highway K. Couple of the issues that I brought up, Planning and Zoning Commission, in public testimony, was safety ballards around the ordering window. I was assured by the applicant, and he testified that those ballards will be installed. I'm just not quite sure about the pedestrian crosswalks across the drive aisles from some of the parking areas. I think that those should be clearly marked. I believe that he did testify that there will be a pedestrian crosswalk marked with the white paint in the parking lot, but I want to ensure that those take place. We also want to ensure that proper landscaping is at this location. This plaza, unfortunately, was created before our landscaping code and our tree code. It's a pavement desert with little vegetation to none at this property. It's mostly concrete and asphalt parking lot, and the landscaping is hard to find at this location. For those reasons, I ask that you pass the conditional use permit, CUP, for Dutch Brothers, or Dutch Bros, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jamie Crunk. Jamie?
I'm really excited that we're going to get another commercial establishment in the city of O'Fallon, bring in a few tax dollars. We keep spreading them out and making positive things happen. So.
Thank you, Jamie. Go ahead and close the public, close the public comment. Any other questions for Scott? No questions? All right. Brings us to Bill 7745. Motion for first reading by title only.
Boyer.
Motion by Councilman Boyer. Do I have a second?
Thompson.
Second by Councilwoman Thompson. Councilman Boyer, please present the bill.
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit to the owner of Dutch Bros to allow a coffee shop with a drive-thru in a C2 general business district under certain conditions on a certain tract of land located at 100 Crossroads Plaza within the city of O'Fallon, Missouri.
Thank you. Brings to Bill 7746. Motion for first reading by title only.
Ragsdale.
Motion by Councilwoman Ragsdale. Do I have a second?
Taylor.
Second by Councilwoman Taylor. Councilman Ragsdale, please present the bill.
Thank you, Mayor. Bill number 7746. An ordinance approving the plans for Hoff Road Intersection, I'm sorry, Hoff Road Reconstruction Phase 2, declaring the project to be necessary and appropriate, authorizing acquisition of property in association therewith, and authorizing certain other actions.
Thank you. Brings to Bill 7747. Motion for first reading by title only?
Boyer.
Was that Mr. Boyer? Do I have a second?
Thompson.
Second by Councilwoman Thompson. Councilman Boyer, please present the bill.
An ordinance approving the plans for Darting Greenway, Sports Park to Blue Bird Meadow Park, declaring the project to be necessary and appropriate, authorizing acquisition of property in association therewith, and authorizing certain other actions.
Thank you. Brings to Bill 7748. Motion for first reading by title only?
Wexler.
Motion by Councilman Wexler, second?
Bibb.
Second by Councilman Bibb. Councilman Wexler, please present the bill.
An ordinance approving the plans for Tom Ginever Avenue and North Cool Springs Road Intersection Improvements Project, declaring the project to be necessary and appropriate, authorizing acquisition of property in association therewith, and authorizing certain other actions.
Thank you. Brings to Bill 7749. Motion for first reading?
Thompson.
Motion by Councilman Thompson, second?
Bibb.
Second by Councilman Bibb. Councilwoman Thompson, please present the bill.
Bill number 7749. An ordinance amending the 2025 budget for the period of January 1st, 2025, through December 31st, 2025, for the city of O'Fallon, Missouri, and providing for the approval of expenditures made pursuant to said budget.
Thank you. Brings to Bill 7750. Motion for first reading?
Bibb.
Motion by Councilman Bibb. Do I have a second?
Wexler.
Motion by Councilman Wexler. Councilman Bibb, please present the bill.
Bill number 7750. An ordinance authorizing the city of O'Fallon, Missouri, to issue its taxable industrial revenue bonds, Aldi Inc. Project Series 2025, and a principal amount not to exceed $100 million for the purpose of providing funds to pay the costs of acquiring, constructing, and equipping a facility for an industrial development project in the city, approving a plan for the project, and authorizing the city to enter into certain agreements and take certain other actions in connection with the issuance of the bond.
Thank you. Brings to Bill 7751. Motion for first reading?
Boyer.
Motion by Councilman Boyer. Do I have a second?
Thompson.
Second by Councilwoman Thompson. Councilman Boyer, please present the bill.
Bill number 7751. An ordinance approving the record plot of Market Center subdivision, adjusted Lot 1 and Lot 4, and authorizing the city clerk to attest and certify approval of said plot.
Thank you. Motion for second reading by title only?
Boyer.
Motion by Councilman Boyer, second?
Thompson.
Second by Councilwoman Thompson. All in favor? Any opposed? Mr. O'Keefe?
Bill number 7751, second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance approving the record plot of Market Center subdivision, adjusted Lot 1 and Lot 4, and authorizing the city clerk to attest and certify approval of said plot.
Thank you. Motion final passage?
Boyer.
Motion by Councilman Boyer. Do I have a second?
Thompson.
Second by Councilwoman Thompson. Questions or comments? Councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting's now closed.
Seven yes, zero no. Bill 7751 passed, becomes ordinance number?
7205.
7205. Thank you. Thank you, Bess. Brings us to Bill 7752. Motion for first reading?
Bibb.
Motion for Councilwoman Bibb. Do I have a second?
Wexler.
Second by Councilwoman Wexler. Councilwoman Bibb, please present the bill.
Bill number 7752. An ordinance approving the record plat of Harvest at Hopewell Subdivision Plat 2B, and authorizing the city clerk to attest, certify, approval of said plat.
Thank you. Motion for second reading?
Bibb.
Councilwoman Bibb, second?
Wexler.
Second by Councilwoman Wexler. All in favor? Any pose, Mr. O'Keefe?
Bill number 7752. Second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance approving the record plat of Harvest at Hopewell Subdivision Plat 2B, and authorizing the city clerk to attest and certify approval of said plat.
Thank you. Motion for final passage?
Bibb.
Motion for Councilwoman Bibb. Second?
Wexler.
Second by Councilwoman Wexler. Questions or comments? Councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting's closed.
Seven yes, zero no. 7752 passed becomes ordinance number?
7206.
7206. Thank you, Bess. Brings to Bill 7753. Motion for first reading?
Bibb.
Motion for Councilwoman Bibb. Second?
Wexler.
Second by Councilwoman Wexler. All in, Mr. Bibb?
Bill number 7753. An ordinance approving the record plat of Harvest at Hopewell Subdivision Plat 3B, and authorizing the city clerk to attest and certify approval of said plat.
Thank you. Motion for second reading?
Bibb.
Motion for Councilwoman Bibb. Second?
Wexler.
Second by Councilwoman Wexler. All in favor? Any pose, Mr. O'Keefe?
Bill number 7753. Second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance approving the record plat of Harvest at Hopewell Subdivision Plat 3B, and authorizing the city clerk to attest and certify approval of said plat.
Motion for final passage?
Bibb.
Motion for Councilwoman Bibb. Second?
Wexler.
Second by Councilwoman Wexler. Questions? Councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting's now closed.
Seven yes, zero no. 7753 passed becomes ordinance number?
7207.
7207. Thank you, Bess. Brings to Bill 7754. Motion for first reading?
Bibb.
Motion for Councilwoman Bibb. Second?
Wexler.
Second by Councilwoman Wexler. Councilwoman Bibb?
Bill number 7754. An ordinance approving the record plat of Harvest at Hopewell Subdivision Plat 4B, and authorizing the city clerk to attest and certify approval of said plat.
Thank you. Motion for second reading?
Bibb.
Motion for Councilwoman Bibb. Second?
Wexler.
Second by Councilwoman Wexler. All in favor? Any pose, Mr. O'Keefe?
Bill number 7754. Second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance approving the record plat of Harvest at Hopewell Subdivision Plat 4B, and authorizing the city clerk to attest and certify approval of said plat.
Thank you. Motion for final passage?
Bibb.
Motion for Councilwoman Bibb. Second?
Wexler.
Second by Councilwoman Wexler. Questions? Councilmembers, cast your vote.
The voting's closed.
Seven yes, zero no. Bill 7754 passed becomes ordinance number?
7208.
7208. Thank you, Bess. Brings to Bill 7755. Motion for first reading?
Bibb.
Motion for Bibb. Second?
Wexler.
Second by Councilwoman Wexler. Councilwoman Bibb?
Bill number 7755. An ordinance approving the record plat of Harvest at Hopewell Subdivision Plat 5C, and authorizing the city clerk to attest and certify approval of said plat.
Thank you. Motion for second reading?
Bibb.
Can I just ask? Every other one of these is plat number B, and this one's C. We, are we sure that that's correct? Okay. No one says otherwise. I'm sorry. I just, it just seems odd.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Bibb. Is there a second?
Wexler.
Second by Councilwoman Wexler. All in favor? Any pose, Mr. O'Keefe?
Bill number 7755. Second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance approving the record plat of Harvest at Hopewell Subdivision Plat 5C, and authorizing the city clerk to attest and certify approval of said plat.
Motion for final passage?
Bibb.
Motion for Councilwoman Bibb. Second?
Wexler.
Second by Councilwoman Wexler. Questions or comments? Mr. Snowden.
Mayor and council will verify that that's not a scribbler's error before anything is finalized.
Thank you, sir.